Hey, Virginia. Did you know the law protects patients from surprise medical bills? Insurance companies and hospitals post cost information online. You can request a good faith estimate three days ahead of hospital care. Know your rights as a healthcare consumer. Visit ControlYourCare.com to learn more about patient-focused healthcare laws. ControlYourCare.com can help empower your healthcare decisions. Paid for by the Virginia Hospital and Healthcare Association.
If you're a Kia K5 GT and Kia Forte GT owner, this is a reminder to breathe. See that sophisticated interior? Enjoy those sensations. And now, imagine how you look from the outside and that speed that only a Kia GT sedan can give you. Sorry, I can't help but get excited.
For those lives full of thrilling emotions, the all-powerful, all-fun Kia GT Sedans. Kia: Movement That Inspires. Limited inventory available. Call 800-333-4KIA for details. Always drive safely.
The Johnson's Wax Program with Fibber McGee and Molly. The makers of Johnson's Wax and Johnson's self-polishing glow coat present Fibber McGee and Molly with Bill Thompson, Gail Gordon, Arthur Q. Bryan, Dick LaGrande, L. V. Allman, and me, Harlow Wilcox. The script is by Don Quinn and Phil Leslie. Music by the Kingsman and Billy Mills Orchestra. Fibber and Molly join us in a moment. Here's cheering news. Next time you wax your floors and linoleum, you'll know you won't have to do that job soon again if you use the self-polishing floor wax that lasts up to four times longer. Because Johnson's Glow Coat is now water repellent. That's right. Glow Coat is now positively water repellent. And because it's water repellent, it lasts up to four times longer. Glow Coat doesn't disappear when water is spilled or tracked on it. And you don't wipe up the wax when you wipe up the water. You can even damp mop a Glow Coat-protected surface repeatedly without killing its shine. You get far more for your money in Glow Coat. It lasts up to four times longer because it's positively water repellent. Tomorrow, give your floors this beauty and long-lasting protection only Glow Coat gives. Get Johnson's Water Repellent Glow Coat. No change in the package, remember, but there's a wonderful difference inside. The City Council of Wistful Vista has never had a woman member. But as the bee said when it sat on the hatpin, "There's a first time for everything." If the lady of the house at 79 Wistful Vista can be sufficiently urged to run for office... But for further details, listen to Fibber McGee and Molly.
Well, I don't know what to say, Mrs. Clammer.
Uh, let's go over this thing again, slow, Clammy. I didn't get it either. I guess I'm kinda dull today.
Today? You're out! What's the matter, Mrs. Clammer?
Oh, I bit my tongue. And just in time, too.
Now, here's the situation, Mr. McGee.
Now, take it slow, in syllables of one word.
As you know, there is an interim vacancy in the City Council. And we women of the Wistful Vista Women's Club would like to have Mrs. McGee fill the office.
Me? Oh, heavenly days, Mrs. Clammer. All I know about politics is that if you kiss too many babies, one of them is liable to hold you to it. Look at Vice President Barkley.
Personally, Tootsie.
Yes, Mr. McGee?
I was speaking to my wife, Clammy. Since when did I start calling our neighbor women "Tootsie"?
Well, it'll be only fair play, Mr. McGee. You should hear what the neighbors call you.
Gee, thanks, that's nice to know, Clammy. Molly, you better do it. Get on that city council, think of the good you could do. Like getting me an honorary police badge so I could tell them...
No, no, just a minute, dearie. I don't know about this. After all, Mrs. Clammer, I'm just a housewife and...
Of course you are, dear. The finest training in the world for a political office. How long have you two been married?
Well, now, let me see. When were the Lincoln-Douglas debates?
Oh, it wasn't that long ago, kiddo, my gosh.
Well, it doesn't really matter. What I mean is that for years and years as a private party, you've been arguing with the utility companies. "Give us more water pressure." "Why is my gas bill so high?" "What do you mean I have to take a six-party telephone?" And all that sort of thing. Now you can do it as a city official.
Oh, boy, am I gonna have fun. Dear sir, as the husband of Councilwoman McGee, I hereby give you just three days to remove that fireplug at 14th and Oak, which for 12 years I've been getting tickets for parking in front of it, and if you don't...
Now, hold it. Look, Mrs. Clammer, I don't like to sound mercenary. And I know that being in the city council is mostly honorary. And money isn't everything. And I've heard of a lot of dollar-a-year men who would have been expensive at 35 cents, but... What's the salary?
Good question. Strange I didn't think of that.
Well, as you say, Mrs. McGee, it is mostly honorary. But there is a salary of $50 a buck to take care of expenses.
Grab it, Snooki, grab it. Get on that council and then vote yourself a raise. I'll go around with petitions and then...
McGee! That's not a very nice...
Oh, not right away, of course. Get yourself in solid first. Kid 'em along with a lot of phony economies for a while. You know, like shorter benches in the parks? Smaller animals in the city zoo? Stuff like that. Then when they ain't looking, sneak in their resolution.
No.
Well, gee whiz, I was merely...
Oh, bother, Mrs. McGee. Oh, you could do so much good, you know. And we need a woman viewpoint in the council. Please say yes.
Well...
Come on, baby, I always wanted to be married to a politician. Why, in a few years from now, I can even write a book. Inside Wistful Vista. Or She Had What It Took and She Took What They Had.
Sweetheart, will you get it into your bright-eyed little head that if I do get to be a councilwoman, I'll be an honest one?
Of course you will, Mrs. McGee. Mr. McGee, you're very cynical.
Yes, yes, I guess I am that, Clammy. Maybe ignorant, too. You take the displaced persons bill, for instance. Till last month, I thought DP meant Drew Pearson. So if Molly decides...
I'll tell you what, Mrs. Clammer. You tell the ladies I'm considering the matter seriously.
Oh, splendid, Mrs. McGee, splendid. I'll go inform the women's club immediately. Thank you so much.
Oh, not at all, Clammy. You may quote us as saying that we are for improved city government and intend to fight corruption in the city.
McGee! I'll make my own speeches, if you please.
You betcha, kiddo, you make 'em and I'll write 'em. I always say...
Well, I must be going, Mrs. McGee. Thank you so much, and I know this is a wonderful day for Wistful Vista.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Clammer. I'll do my best. Let me open the door for you.
Hello, Phil.
Oh!
Hey, who you pointing your finger at, Wimp?
Hmm? Oh, excuse me, I was pointing it at the doorbell, uh, Mr. McGee, but Mrs. McGee opened it before I had a chance to.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Clammer. But do you know Mr. Wallace Wimpel? Our neighbor, Mrs. Clammer, Mr. Wimpel.
How do you do, Mrs. Clammer? Oh, we've met before, Mr. Wimpel, at the day you recited some of your poetry to our women's club. Oh, it was simply wonderful. I just love that little poem of yours about the woodpecker.
I don't believe I ever heard that one, Wimp.
What was it, Mr. Wimpel?
Oh, it was just a simple little thing. It was from a book of poetry I wrote once called "Versus Simple" by Wallace Wimpel. Do recite for them, Mr. Wimpel, do, please do.
Oh, he don't have to if you don't want it, Clammy. Don't, don't.
The woodpecker. A red-headed bird named Gregory was sitting one day in an old dead tree. And his wife on their nest not far away was waiting for him. And the end of day, when Greg would come home with a bunch of bugs, she'd feed their four little red-headed mugs. But she saw him loafing and blew her top and screamed, "This laziness has to stop. Now get to work or I'll wring your neck." So peck, my Gregory. Gregory, peck. Oh, I just love that. Thank you, Mr. Wimpel. Well, I must go now. Goodbye.
Goodbye, Mrs. Clammer.
So long, Clammy. Well, I can't give you much time today, Wimp. I and Molly gotta get downtown to the city hall and start campaigning.
My wife ran for office once. Sweetie's age.
You mean...
Yes, my big old wife. She ran for dog catcher.
Oh.
During the campaign, she used to practice throwing a net over me every night. Make me run around the living room and bark and then catch me in the net.
Yeah?
Oh, I got so tired of it.
Well, did she get elected, Mr. Wimpel?
No. I fixed it so the city didn't need a dog catcher and they abolished the office.
Well, how the sandhill did you do that?
Well, it took my entire savings, but it was worth it. I bought a license for every dog in town. My goodness, when I think of being practiced on with a dog catcher's net every night for four years, I just sit down on the floor and scratch myself. Well, I've gotta be going, folks. Can I drop you at the city hall?
Do you have your car here, Mr. Wimpel?
Oh, no, I always walk.
Oh, in that case, drop us off, Wimp. Get your hat, candidate.
Well, what do you think, Mr. Mayor? Is there any way I can gracefully withdraw?
What do you mean withdraw, Molly? You told Mrs. Clammer you...
I told her I'd consider it seriously, dearie. I couldn't think of a good excuse not to run, so I was stalling for time.
Well, Molly, I think you'd make a very good council member.
Me too, Latriv. My gosh, with the advice I could give her...
McGee...
Huh?
In the many years I've held the office of mayor in Wistful Vista, you have given me a great deal of advice also. And I keep getting re-elected and re-elected.
Oh, well, shucks, it's nothing at any red-blooded...
Because I ignored your advice. Now be quiet a minute.
Well, the only reason I was giving you such bum advice, boy, was because I thought your phone might have been tapped. Therefore, I...
Will you please be still a minute?
Okay, but better men than you have ignored my advice, Latriv. When Tom Dewey ran the second time, I sent him a telegram.
McGee!
Okay, I'll just sit here and take notes.
There's something else I wish you'd take, but it would need a doctor's prescription and require a post-mortem. Now then, Molly, I do wish you'd let us file your name. There isn't much time, you know. The election is in the morning, 10 o'clock. Council chamber.
Oh, I don't know, Mr. Mayor. I don't really want to do it, but...
And may I say a word?
No. How about it, Molly? I can whip the other council members into line if you say the word.
As Molly's campaign manager, I think our best strategy would be...
Hush, dearie.
Okay.
You realize, Mr. Mayor, I'm just a simple housewife.
Excuse me. Hello? Yes, this is my honor. I mean... I am his mayor. My mayor. This is Mayor Latrivia speaking. Yes? Yes, yes, certainly. I'll cut the ribbon over the new 14th Street Bridge Wednesday at 11:00. Not at all. Goodbye.
Cut the ribbon over the new bridge? My gosh, that bridge was dedicated last July.
I know, but it's a very ugly bridge and I've been ribbing the contractors about it ever since. They want me to cut the ribbon. I will do so on Wednesday at 11:00. More formal that way. Now then, Molly, about your candidacy... Oh, excuse me. Yes, Miss Gimlet?
Mr. Mayor, there's a delegation outside your door that would like to sing a song for Mrs. McGee. They hear she's going to be a candidate for the city council. Shall I open the door and let them sing?
Heavenly days, my goodness, son. Well...
By all means, Miss Gimlet.
Now, now, don't spill it, kiddo, don't spill it. But this is my doing. I arranged this demonstration. Cost me 22 bucks. And that's two bucks over the Wistful Vista scale, but I paid him.
All right, boys, for our favorite candidate, Mrs. Molly McGee.
There's something about a hometown band that makes you want to shout. There's something about a hometown band that brings the neighbors on. Your sister may be the majorette who leads them down the street. Tarada da boom-de-boom goes your heart with their marching feet. Wherever you live throughout the land, there's something about a hometown band. It may be the yups, it may be the moose, it may be the Shriner's Band, the Fire Department, Police Department, or maybe the Collage Band. It may be the Lions or Legionnaires, or maybe the Rotary Band. Whoever they are, they're on their way. Come on, let's give them a hand! Here they come! Look at the trivia beating the drums! Hey, look at McGee! Had to get in with his man, the late teeny is the majorette who leads them down the street. Tarada da boom-de-boom goes your heart with their marching feet. There never has been a finer band. And the Wistful Vista Chatter Club, Marching Society, Glow Coat Conservatory Band. Wherever you live throughout the land, there's something about a hometown band.
Thank you, everybody, thank you. That was wonderful.
And may I take this opportunity on behalf of my wife to say a few words? We feel that Wistful Vista...
Miss Gimlet.
That's a pretty rude way to treat a candidate's manager. Bye, Georgia Pilots, Miss...
Well, we won't take up any more of your time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and I suppose I'll have to run now. But if I can think of a graceful way to get out of it...
Ah, 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 don't tip over the banana wagon, kiddo. Well, so long, Latrivia.
Good day, McGee. Good day, Molly, and good luck.
Thank you, your honor.
Look, baby, you gotta run. Think what it means to me. Why, with you on the council, I can ride on the squad cars, play peonokle at the firehouse, and hire Junior.
Oh, hello, Mr. Wilcox.
Hello, pal, hello, Molly. Say, I just heard the good news.
Thank you, Junior, I think I'll do a good job.
Doing what?
I'm gonna manage her campaign. Wasn't that the good news you meant?
No, I meant the good news that she was running for the city council.
Well, I'm not so sure, Mr. Wilcox. Besides, there can't be much of a campaign with a council election tomorrow morning.
You'd be surprised, baby. The telephone campaign I can put on by telephone tonight with what I know about some of them council members...
Uh, uh, wait a minute, pal. You're off to a great start getting her elected on a blackmail basis.
That ain't blackmail, Junie. I'm merely utilizing certain facts and information which have come to my attention in order that my candidate, who stands for clean government and government by the people, of the people and for the people, with justice and cheap transportation for all.
McGee! Goodness gracious. Will you come off it?
Okay, but I wish there'd been a photographer here just then. You notice that gesture I done when I said, "Cheap transportation for all"? Kinda like I was embracing the whole...
Will you pipe down a minute, pal?
Certainly, I'll let my candidate speak for herself.
Well, I think that I...
Tell him how you're gonna work for that new playground. Tell him how you're gonna get a new clubhouse for the Elks.
Be quiet!
Okay. It's two to one. Majority rule. The democratic way.
Now then, Molly. Just what? Be quiet, pal.
I didn't say anything.
Well, you were opening your mouth.
Well, I'm wiggling my toes, too, but that don't mean I'm gonna kick somebody. By somebody, I don't mean you, Molly.
You're sweet.
Now, Molly, just what is your platform?
Oh, I don't know, Mr. Wilcox. In the first place, if I get to be a member of the council, which I hope I don't, I'm gonna work first for a new clubhouse for the Boy Scouts. I'm very interested in the Boy Scouts because I think scout work is a wonderful start toward good citizenship and deserves everybody's whole heart of support.
And furthermore, my candidate...
Hush, dearie! There isn't room on this dump for both of us. You know, this week, Mr. Wilcox, marks the 40th anniversary of the Boy Scouts. And I think it's a fitting time for Wistful Vista and every city to encourage their activities.
That's a fine statement for the press. I'll call the Gazette and have that...
Oh, cut it out, Gabby. And after you do, the Boy Scouts a good turn, Molly, what then?
Well, seeing as I'm merely a housewife...
What do you mean merely? Gee whiz, housewives are pretty important people. The homemakers of the nation. The family builders. The...
The Glow Coat buyers. Let's face it...
Yes, the Glow Coat buyers. Don't sell that short, pal.
I'm hip.
It's the housewives who buy the Johnson's Water Repellent Glow Coat. And it's the Glow Coat that keeps the home clean and sanitary and easy to keep bright and cheerful-looking.
It's the council...
Exactly. If those housewives will take the counsel of an old wax salesman who is selling the new Johnson's Water Repellent Glow Coat now on their dealer's shelves in the familiar Johnson container, and all Glow Coat now being sold is water repellent...
How the city hall officials permit this yelling around in the corridors, I'll never understand. When my wife gets on the city council by...
Molly, Molly, I'll talk to you later about this. I can't get a word in edgewise with your campaign manager standing around. Good luck tomorrow. And with him, you'll need it.
Goodbye, Mr. Wilcox.
Go on, wacky. So, with me as your manager, you'll need a lot of luck, will ya? Why, George, I'll get even with that guy. When you get on that city council, Molly, if you don't... Oh, good afternoon, Judge.
Uh, good day, sir.
Who was that?
Judge Morton. Traffic court. Old friend of mine. Pay all my traffic tickets to him. Nice guy. Takes my personal check. What was I saying?
Well, you were talking so much, I don't know what you were saying. But look, McGee, I don't wanna run for council member. I was just being polite to Mrs. Clammer and I didn't know of any way I could answer her without...
Oh, excuse me. Oh, hi, Al. How's May?
May'll be fine, McGee.
Thanks, Al.
Who's Al and who is May? And what did he mean by "May will be fine"?
For fishing, he meant. That's, uh, that's Pete Bealman, the license clerk. I give him all my fishing license business.
You know more people here in the city hall.
Oh, wait till you get on that council, kiddo. I'll clutter up these corridors till they have to blast me out. Oh, hi, Doc.
Well, hello there, McGee. Hello, my dear.
My goodness, if it isn't the city health commissioner. Hello, Dr. Campbell.
What are you doing within 10 miles of your legitimate office, fatso? Why ain't you at the hospital overcharging some poor hypochondriac with a popcorn allergy and a healthy checking account? I'd better answer that cautiously crumbled brain inasmuch as I'm in the presence of a prospective city councillor. Is it true, Molly, you're running for city council?
You betcha, Doctor. And I do not hesitate to say, on behalf of my candidate, that this community...
McGee!
Huh?
Lay off.
Okay.
Well, it's good news if true. We need a feminine influence on the city council as health commissioner and as such responsible for the health of even the lowbrows in the council. Maybe if we have a woman in there, I can get those President McKinley spittoons thrown out.
Heavenly days, how crude.
In the opinion of my candidate...
Oh, dry up, you imitation ward healer. Is he mismanaging your campaign for you, Molly?
Well, he's doing his best, Doctor.
Thank you, my dear. My humble efforts on your behalf...
Fortunately, fortunately, he hasn't got much time to really louse it up for you. I understand the election is in the morning. May I extend my best wishes, Molly? I think you'll be a better man in the council than most of them.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Doctor. I am sure that my candidate appreciates your sincere... Where'd he go?
In the mayor's office. Any port in a storm, I guess. Well, we'd better be getting home, McGee. I've gotta sit down and think of a graceful way to withdraw my candidacy.
Hey, 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 don't talk like that, kiddo. My gosh, I need you on the city council, Molly. Suppose that new airport bill goes through? Well, you know where it'll be and you can tell me and I can quietly buy up a lot of real estate around there and...
What with?
What with, you see what I mean? You will make a great council member. You cut right to the heart of a problem. That's the very...
Hello, McGee.
Oh.
Who was that?
One of the bailiffs in the circuit court. Yeah. Guy I know, his name is Max. Yeah. He wouldn't, he wouldn't wait for me to tell him, but he's a phony.
A bony bailiff, why?
Went fishing with him once and the boat leaked and he couldn't bail for sour apples. Water come in the boat faster than it went out.
Wait a minute, McGee. Oh, there's Ollie from the Elks Club. Yoohoo, hello, Ollie.
Oh, hi, Ollie.
Well, hello there, McGee. Hello, Mrs. Hey, what's this they tell me about you running for council chamber?
Well, I'm not sure, Ollie. My name has been filed, but I don't know...
I'm handling her campaign, Ollie. And as my candidate, she'll naturally have the advantage of...
As your candidate, McGee. She got fine chance of being escorted to the city limits. Give her five dollars and say, "Don't come back." Look, Mrs., if you run for city council chamber, leave McGee home. I don't forget the time he managed his campaign for a fellow for Grand Exhausted Ruler at the Elks Club.
Oh, shucks, that was merely a...
Quiet, McGee, what happened, Ollie?
Well, I don't know, Mrs. All I know is after voting was over, All I know is after voting was over, McGee's candidate tries to kill McGee with billiard cue.
He was just kidding. He only lost by twenty-seven votes.
Out of how many casts?
Pretty boned.
Rainy night, didn't have all the members there.
Didn't rain till afterwards, McGee.
Looked like it would, though, and besides, I don't think...
Never mind, never mind, dearie. Nobody will be happier than I will if you can manage me into losing. However, if I am elected, I'll do my best to be a good council member.
Sure you will, Mrs. And I, I got to go see the man at the License Bureau now, and once again, somebody tears the clot on the pool table at the Elks Club.
I did? I mean, they did?
Well, what does that to do with the License Bureau, Ollie?
Well, I want to see if they sell me a haunting license, Mrs. Course, next time that pool table gets tore, I'm gonna shoot me an elk.
Bye, Ollie.
Wonder if he meant anything personal. Oh, well, come on, candidate. Gotta get you a good dinner and put you to bed early. Fresh in the morning, fresh as a daisy. Good impression on the council. You see, my dear, the psychological effect of it...
Order. Order in the council, please. Order. Order. The next order of business is the election of a council member to fill the vacancy created by Alderman Franacy, who is leaving for parts unknown with unknown parts of the city treasury. Of the two candidates whose names are on file for this office, we shall ask for a few words from Mrs. Molly McGee of seventy-nine Wistful Vista. If you please, Mrs. McGee.
Thank you, gentlemen. First of all, I am not a politician, I am just a housewife. If, however, I am elected, I'd like to propose a new clubhouse for the Boy Scouts, new buses for the schools, a swimming pool in the Fourteenth Street Playground, better street lighting, and some round wheels on our street tires. In closing, let me say that I know almost nothing of politics. But if I am elected, I promise not to make a single move without the help and advice of my good husband, Mr. Fibber McGee.
The chair recognizes Alderman Croftney.
Gentlemen, I move that we elect the other candidate, Mr. Alvin C. Winegad, by a unanimous vote.
Second.
All in favor?